Five thirty-one. Madam City Clerk, will you please call roll?
He's coming.
All right. I think he's the first one.
Councilmember Duncan?
Here.
Councilmember Garner?
Here.
Councilmember Thorpe?
Here.
Mayor Proton Venable?
Here.
Mayor Beaver?
Here.
All present.
Thank you, ma'am. Public comment?
We have no cards.
Thank you. At this time, we'll move into closed session. The time is five thirty-two.
My own personal speech.
Yes, sir. Good evening, everybody. There he goes. Good evening, everybody. This time, we'll open the regular City Council Successor Agency and Housing Authority meeting of November thirteenth, twenty twenty-four. The time is six P. M. Welcome. And at this time, I'd ask our captain lead us in the Pledge of Allegiance.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the flag over which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Thanks, sir. Madam City Clerk, will you please call roll?
Councilmember Duncan?
Here.
Councilmember Garner?
Here.
Councilmember Thorpe?
Councilmember Thor?
Here.
Mayor Pro Tem Venable?
Here.
Mayor Bieber?
Here.
All present.
Thank you, ma'am. Mr. City Attorney, will you please report out of closed session?
Honorable Mayor, there is nothing to report out of closed section. No reportable action out of closed session.
Thank you, sir. Mr. City Manager, are there any changes to the agenda this evening?
No changes tonight, sir.
Thank you, sir. It's been too long since we've seen this Yap's Dog of the Month. Let's welcome our Yap's Dog of the Month right now and see if we can find this one at home.
So, hello, guys. It's been a minute here. I'll show Dozer off in all his thick and McNugget glory here. So, this is Dozer. Obviously, he is with Yap's, Ucaipa Animal Placement Society, and he is a pug that we rescued from a local shelter. We think he's between five and six years old. He is currently waiting to get his teeth cleaned and his neuter, which he will get before his adoption is finalized, but he is available for foster to adopt. He loves snuggles, short walks on the beach, and campfires with cozy blankets that he will steal from you. So, if you are looking for a couch potato literally in the shape of a potato, Dozer's your man, and he gives sloppy kisses, and he loves them. Hi. We are also fundraising for Dozer to help offset some of the costs of his medical needs. He had really, really bad pneumonia when we rescued him from the shelter, and he was on the sad list, and we couldn't leave him behind because look at that face. And so, if anyone's interested in making donations, or you know somebody that's been looking for a pug in their life, he's your guy. And you can make donations on our website. It's yapss.org/donate.
I think Megan needs that dog.
He is so cool. He is super cool. In the yard, he like runs up to you and like throws himself on his belly, and he shamelessly flirts. And he does ride well in the car.
So, is our reporter, Madam Reporter from News Mirror here? No? Usually, we have a photo so we can put it in the newspaper, but is the News Mirror reporter here?
Might not today. He does have videos on our social media right now.
There we go. All right. So, we'll do a photo for Dozer. We'll get it to the News Mirror.
Come on, Dozer. Let's get you home.
Those are fun. I enjoy those. All right, moving on to public comment. If there's anybody who'd like to speak, the public comment speakership on the back. Hand it to our city clerk, and she'll get him up to me. We have, we'll start with Mary Ruder, followed by Mr. Mark Westwood, followed by Mr. Lee Caberline.
I'm sure. Well, hello. My name is Mary Ruder, and I am a resident of the North Bench. Today, I am here as a citizen of Ucaipa and a local business owner. I would like to express my sincere gratitude to Councilman Bobby Dun-- see, I'm gonna cry, to Councilman Bobby Duncan for the integrity and dedication with which he has served as a council member and mayor of Ucaipa. In the twelve-plus years that I have known you, Bobby, you have proven time and again your commitment to serving our city. I have seen you at nearly every event in our city, supporting and promoting commerce and leading Ucaipa in necessary growth and expansion. From day one of your service, you showed your openness and accessibility by distributing your personal cellphone number to your constituents and people who don't even live in your district. You frequent and support local businesses, embodying the mantra of shop local. In a time of crisis in our city, you were the person I called for advice. Your immediate response made me feel safe, both personally and for my uptown business. Even when I disagreed with your council vote, I appreciated your willingness to stand up and be counted. You have endured what I consider unwarranted harassment, and yet you have continued to serve this community to the best of your ability. Your love for our city is apparent. As a very small token of my appreciation, I have secretly collaborated with your wife and your daughter and created a very special jam in your honor. Bobby's Tipping the Apple Cart Jam is made with apples because you are as American as apple pie, honey and sugar because you are simply a sweet man, all spice and cinnamon because you are a warm, fuzzy human being who can also have a bit of a kick. I hope this jam makes you feel as cozy and comfortable as your presence makes me feel. Most of the jams I sell are in eight-ounce jars. Bobby, your Tipping the Apple Cart is in a nine-ounce jar because you've always given a little extra to the community that you served. Your jam will be on my shelves for as long as I own my business. You are a good man, Bobby Duncan, and I will miss seeing your face. See, I'm gonna cry. I will miss seeing your face on the council dais, you know, up there. I am proud and grateful to be able to call you my friend. Thank you for your service. And, Your Honor, may I approach you and give you your jam?
Yes, ma'am. Mr. Mark Westwood?
Good afternoon, evening, council. My name's Mark Westwood. Most of you are familiar with me as being with KQLH ninety-two point five FM, but now I have to tell you that I'm president of the Ucaipa Mobile Home Residents Association as well. Standing behind me is Dave Devon, who is the recording secretary, and Lee Caberline is the first vice chair. Dick Alt is the second vice chair. Dave Maynard's the third. We're happy to tell you that the Ucaipa Mobile Home Residents Association is alive and well, and is growing, and is doing well, and we're here to represent the forty-one mobile home parks and thousands of residents and voters and taxpayers in our parks, and we're glad to tell you that it is prospering and doing well. Despite any other rumors, we're happy to be here. We're enthusiastic about representing our community, and we hope to work well together with you and the council with dignity and respect for the good of all citizens of Ucaipa. And I'd like to hand this to Lee, who's the next speaker, I believe, anyway. So, thank you. And anybody who would like to contact me regarding an issue, I'll give you my personal cellphone number, nine oh nine eight one zero six one zero two, nine oh nine eight one zero six one zero two, or you can simply just look up Mark Westwood, KQLH, and you'll find me all over the place. Thank you.
Thank you, Mark.
Lee Caberline, I live on one, two, three, zero, zero, Fifth Street. Also prepared something. Let me just get my notes. All right. I'm honored to serve as the first vice chair, and I want to thank the members of the YMRA for their votes. The reason I joined the YMRA is because I feel that this city, along with Chris Mann, especially Chris Mann, perhaps my opinion will be subject to change anyways, is using heavy-handed tactics to reshape the city in his image, or any image, without really trying to understand those they might hurt in the process. And there are many people in Ucaipa's mobile home parks that are concerned that the city government will turn our mobile home parks into high-density apartments, possibly displacing hundreds of people, especially those on fixed incomes, who are seniors, the disabled, or disabled veterans. We are here to let you know that the Ucaipa Mobile Home Residents Association is here, and we are ready to fight not only for our own mobile homes, but for all mobile home residents in Ucaipa. Thank you.
Thank you, sir. City Council Conflict of Interest Disclosure. Is there any member of the council that has a conflict of interest to disclose? Moving on to Consent Agenda. Councilmember Garner has informed that he will be recusing himself from Consent Agenda Items six, seven, and nine, so we'll be voting on those separately. Is there any member of the council that wishes to pull an item from the remaining Consent Agenda items for discussion?
I'd like to pull number two.
Item number two for our Mayor Pro Tem. Any further? All right. Is there a motion to approve items one, three, four, five, eight?
I'll make that motion.
All right. Motion made by Councilman Duncan?
I'll second.
Seconded by Councilman Thorpe. Any further discussion? All those in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed? Hearing none. The motion carries. Councilman Garner, if you can. Is there a motion to approve items six, seven, and nine?
I'll make a motion to approve items six, seven, and nine.
I'll second his motion. Any further discussion? All those in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed? Hearing none, the motion carries. Item number two, who'll be presenting? Okay. I wasn't. I apologize. Second reading of ordinance number four, five, two. This from our city clerk.
Thank you, Mayor. The second reading of ordinance number four, five, two is amending various provisions of the Ucaipa Municipal Code. I'm happy to answer any specific questions that the council may have.
I just, how long did it take you guys to come up with, excuse me, this, the new one?
Um, wow, several months. I think the city manager can probably elaborate a little bit further on that.
Yeah, Mr. Mayor Pro Tem, you may recall that updating municipal code was one of the goals set by this city council in January, and so the city's been working on it slowly over many months, led by the city attorney's office in conjunction with each of the departments of the city because different sections of the municipal code impact different departments and their operations within the city. And so, it has been a heavy lift over several months to go literally line by line and look at the updates that need to be made.
Yeah, that's why I was wanting to table it in the beginning because it's taken you guys so long, and it's, we've been giving it, you know, only, I think it's a couple of weeks to get through all this stuff, and, man, a lot of reading. But what did you change since the first one?
Yes, so we had the first reading at the last city council meeting, and we've received direction from the city council to make some updates, so I'd be happy to go down that list. Subsection one H specifically to the city council, the section for compensation was accidentally deleted. We went ahead and added that back in. Section eight point three six point zero four zero, we changed the title to emergency plan.
With, real quick, it was added back in with no change to the compensation from previous?
Correct.
Okay, thank you.
We still get our five hundred bucks.
Yes, yes. That will be a separate discussion. Two point zero eight point zero seven zero, it says the last word was section. We changed it from section to chapter, so it now reads this chapter. Two point one zero point two two zero D, we added upon city council approval, I'm sorry, upon approval of the city council, and this is per the city council's request. And then eight point three six point one zero zero, we, it now reads the city manager shall have the authority to make aggregate purchases up to two hundred and fifty thousand on his or her signature alone. Purchases in excess of two hundred and fifty thousand shall be approved by the city council.
And a point of clarification, that's only during disaster or emergency for lifesaving measures?
That's correct.
Another point of clarification, that would only be during a time of a declared emergency. If there is not time to get approval ahead of time, and then approval would have to be sought retroactively by the council at the next scheduled meeting.
And those were the only changes that we made.
I'd still like to make a motion to see if we can just table it till the next one, till I can get some more reading in. I understand that we already passed it last week, or I mean, last council meeting and stuff, but that's my request.
There's a motion on the table by our Mayor Pro Tem to table the item. Is there a second?
I'll second it.
Seconded by Councilman Thorpe. All those in favor?
Aye.
Opposed?
No.
Okay. This time, we'll go to item number ten.
Mayor?
Ma'am.
Do we have, so the motion failed to table. Is there a motion?
Understood. Is there a motion to approve the item as written?
I'll approve the item as written.
Motion made by Councilman Duncan. So, I'll second. I'll second the item. Any further discussion? All those in favor?
Aye.
Opposed?
No.
Motion carries thirty-two. Item number ten, Ucaipa Branch Library Project Update and Approval of the Library Project and Use Agreement by Mr. Joe Perdato.
Honorable Mayor and City Council, Joe Perdato, Director of Governmental Affairs. And I'm here to give you an update on the library project and present for your approval an agreement with our partners to move this project forward. A quick recap of the project. Why are we pursuing the library project? That's a question the public has asked intermittently, and is a good time to recap now. In two thousand and one, and then in two thousand and ten, there was a county and city needs assessments that identified a need for a new library. The current one suffers from ADA issues and other layout and structural issues. And then in October twenty twenty-two, the city got a nine billion dollar matching grant that has helped us generate some money to build a new library. This will be the third presentation that this city council has seen on this project. The first one happened in twenty twenty-three when city manager Ray Casey brought to the city council an item to commit, recommit to the project and move forward with the project use agreement. And then in February of this year, we came back and showed, thanks to our project partners, that we were able to meet the matching requirement. So, and to then move forward with the project use agreement. So, this is the third time that we're seeing an update, and we'll look for your approval to move forward. So, again, recap of the matching funds. The city council has set aside three million dollars for the project, which has not been budgeted, but it's been set aside. Supervisor Don Rao was able to secure a million dollars, and the San Manuel Band of Mission Indians, a million dollars, and the county library, four million dollars. And those are our present project partners. So, to date, in February, we talked about a concern that the state's budget deficit may jeopardize our nine million dollar grant. We survived that. The funding remains in whole. More recently, we requested a congressional designation through Congressman Obertnolte, and he was able to secure that in an appropriations bill for five hundred thousand dollars to support the project that we could use in any way we need to support the city's use of general fund, which was good news. The bad news is, is is now that money is in potential jeopardy as the new Trump administration comes into office. There is a potential push from the administration to postpone the appropriation bills so that the new president can put his own input on government spending. So there is a chance that that money goes away, but our lobbyists yesterday indicated that Congress is still pushing to get the appropriations bills done in March. So if they move forward, we'll get an extra five hundred thousand dollars for this project to offset our general fund expenses. And that's important, because I'll discuss that there is some expenses coming soon on this project. We did approach the state library system about reducing the size of the project due to escalating construction costs. They've approved that, so we're now looking at a library instead of twenty-five thousand square feet closer to eighteen thousand square feet. And we also told the council we'd be investigating the ability to do design-build for this project, and state laws had changed and did give us the ability to do that. So we are pursuing that, and Fermin and his team released an RFQ this week inviting bids from potential project partners. That will come back to you maybe late January or February of twenty-five. So that's a quick update on the project. Before you is the use agreement that's going to move this project forward. And there's a few big components. It's a relatively short agreement. We aim to keep it short so that we could stay to, you know, big deal points. Some of those are, number one, construction. Now, what the city is committing to do under this use agreement is be the lead agency for SEQA and also for construction. We're taking on responsibility to secure a design-build partner, lead the construction activities and the design activities, and we're ultimately taking on responsibility as well for design of site improvements and construction of site improvements. That's important, because site improvements are not covered by the grant, which means the city is taking on financial responsibility for those site improvements, which is above the eighteen million dollar grant, and currently projected around two and a half million dollars, but that could grow. And we'll go ahead and show that picture a little more in the presentation, but that is significant for you to consider in this use agreement, that we are taking responsibility for construction, which means site improvements, and that could potentially grow. Term of agreement, this agreement is for twenty-five years. The state requires a minimum of ten. We chose twenty-five because that is generally the typical lifespan of this type of building. At the end of that, at the end of the term of the agreement, the partners can extend it or do a new one, but the city is not obligated to move forward at the end of the agreement. If the city does not move forward with an extension or new agreement, the ownership of the library facility will default to the school district, because they will be retaining ownership of the property. So although we will be constructing it, the school district will own the underlying property, and ultimately, at the end of the agreement, they will own the library facility as well. Termination. And this is important, because as we move forward, the city does not want to be in a position where we commit to something we can't afford. So there are several situations that could trigger a termination of this agreement. The one that is probably most pertinent is if the state takes away... There's a few that are important. Probably the biggest ones relate to if the construction costs exceed what we expect. At that point, that would trigger a termination of the agreement. If the state takes away any of the funding to render it infeasible, that could trigger a termination of the agreement. Or if for some reason the school district can't move forward with the use of the property for any reason, that would terminate this agreement. So there are several circumstances that will trigger a termination, but going into the cost of construction, that's going to be an important one as we move forward. And that relates to financial risk and responsibility. So I've said, there is some risk in assuming the lead agency role in constructing and some of the finances. So city council has already set aside three million dollars for this project. That has yet to be budgeted, but that is for the eighteen million, or the nine... Towards the nine million dollar match, it does not include the site improvements. If you add site improvements, you're looking at another probably two and a half million plus. So the total financial obligation for the city will likely be five and a half million or more. So that's something that the city council should know going forward, that this will be not just three million dollars, but potentially more. And we'll know more after the design has moved forward. But this is just clear communication, so you know going forward what's there, and you can have that deliberation, ask questions at this point, too, to see how you want to proceed. But full transparency, you're looking at about five and a half million or more for this project. So in January, February, when the design-build proposals come back, well, Fermin and his team are organizing a couple of things they want to put in the contract that will actually help us get out of a contract sooner if we see that construction costs are going to be very high, to kind of reduce the expenditures. But we'll go into next steps, which relate to that. So when the award of the design-build comes in January, February, that will trigger real money to be spent, because once the design kicks in, the design costs, the architectural costs, those aren't covered by the grant, and they're estimated to be up to one million dollars of city general fund money that we will not get back from the state. That's real money that the city will have to put forward. If we get the federal congressional designation, that could be five hundred thousand dollars to offset that. Since it's such a large amount of money, that's one of the reasons that Fermin's and his team are hoping to put into a contract with a design-build partner that we get a first look at about thirty percent design. So maybe instead of waiting till we've spent a lot of money on design and architecture and find out that construction's going to be infeasible, we can do it after spending, you know, two hundred, three hundred thousand dollars and try to cut the losses earlier. So I do want to just let you know upfront that the design architectural costs are estimated to be up to one million dollars, and that is real money for which we will not be reimbursed. Also, in January, February, because we'll have to spend, start spending money on the project, you will be presented with a budget adjustment to take some of that three million dollars set aside and give us spending authority and budget that money. Steps to completion, we are here on the partnership agreement. We are simultaneously running the RFQRFP, and so that will come back January, February, and that will start the design process. And once we're in design, at about seventy percent design is when our design-build partner will come back with a maximum guaranteed price. And that will be when they present to us a hard number that they will guarantee they can build the library for, and that will be the big construction costs that you will then have to approve. And then from there, we will work with our design-build partner to try and deliver the project by the grant deadline of March twenty twenty-six. At the moment, the state is not entertaining grant extensions, but as we approach that timeline, they may be more open to it, or depending on what the feedback is from some of our design-build partners and their submissions, we might be able to go back to them and say a six-month extension could mean a ten percent reduction in construction costs. So that's something that we'll look forward to as well. So that's a recap of where we are. That's, those are the big deal points in the agreement. And tonight, we have with us Melanie Orozco, our county librarian, if there's any questions, but she wanted to be here to show the county support for this project as well. So with that, if there's any questions, I'll be happy to answer them.
Thank you, Joe.
What's the size of our existing library right now?
It's a little more than eleven thousand square.
Eleven thousand, so this would be substantially bigger, even at the reduced size.
Even at the reduced size, and based on modern design principles, it was actually the county librarian that said a better layout, we could do really well with eighteen thousand square feet instead of needing the whole twenty-five thousand.
Without getting a formal extension, I understand the state's not entertaining those right now, but is there built into this any kind of grace period at all with the funds? I mean, if it's not done by, what, March of twenty-six, then that money is just gone then. We lose that without, no grace period at all?
We, right, there's no grace period, so that is, that is one of the risks, and that's one thing that some of the design-build people who Fermin and his teams talked to have already expressed concern with, and they've said that that, meeting that deadline would increase the cost of their submissions.
When did you know about this was going to be taking place?
What would be taking place?
I mean, us moving forward with the library.
So we've had direction from city council to move forward with the library since January of twenty twenty-three.
Okay.
And then, and then in February, again, direction to move forward.
And so are we in panic mode? That's why we're using the design and build company?
No, we're not in panic mode. That was actually a process that staff had indicated that we were interested in pursuing because of the ability to streamline the construction process and get a maximum guaranteed price to make sure that, once we got there, that we don't get hit with cost overruns and things like that.
Yeah, because I, we do, you know, I'm in construction, too, and we would never go to a design and build because the costs are that much more. And if we would have done it right when we first started and got all our due diligence done to this point, I don't think that we would have had to spend that kind of money. So...
Yeah, I think in terms of timing, we had a little bit of a setback, because some of the originally planned matching funds that were presented to the council in January twenty twenty-three didn't come to fruition. So we had to scramble and come up with a match, and we weren't able to secure all that money until earlier this year. And so that set us back, and then it's been several months of, is the state going to take away the money, and also negotiating this project use agreement. But I think for many months, we've been interested in the design-build process, because that's something Riverside County used to deliver their projects in a timely fashion.
So let's say, this is an eighteen million dollar library, nine million dollars from the state, and we have to put up nine million dollars and match that grant, otherwise we don't realize the nine million dollar benefit.
Right.
So the project will be an eighteen million dollar project at the end, with state funds and nine million dollars from a match comprised of all of our partnership monies. So that was, well, and that's going to be potentially five and a half million dollars out of our general fund, coupled with the, I think, what, four or five million dollars from our partners?
Right. If I could, Mr. Mayor and Mr. Mayor Protem, let me just address this issue, because I just want to, we've had this discussion before, but I want to remind the city council that, you know, when I came on in March of last year, the community had just been promised this library. Big announcement, nine million dollar grant from the state library, which is phenomenal. But the reality was, there was no plan in place for matching that nine million dollars, right? And so it was a very heavy lift by Joe and his team primarily to go out and figure out where we're going to put nine million dollars. And it was a lot of negotiations with the county. Thrown in there was a change in county CEO, which significantly delayed the project, because he was negotiating that deal with us and the school district personally. And then when he was gone, that reset those negotiations. We have now fifteen million dollars, including the nine million dollar state library grant, of money from that grant, from Supervisor Don Rao, from the executive office slash county library, from San Manuel Band of Indians. None of those things came without a lot of courting, a lot of work, a lot of negotiations to get to where we are today. So it was a very heavy lift. Very proud of the job that the staff has done to get us where we are. And then, we still had to negotiate this three-party agreement, right, between the city and the county and the school district. And there were a lot of, you know, the school district, and it's not, it's not the fault of our local, you know, school district, but there are tons of regulations imposed on them by the state of what can and cannot be done on school district-owned property, which this will be located on, right? And so, you know, I think, given where we started, you know, when we started this process, it looked bleak to be able to deliver this project at all. And frankly, it'll be up to the council whether you want to move forward or not, because it's not free, right? It's a hard decision when we're working our way out of a tough, you know, budget situation to spend these. Now, three million has been identified and set aside for the past couple of years, our general fund, but that is money that could be freed up for other things, right? On the other hand, it's very difficult to walk away from fifteen million dollars that is not city money, right? We will probably never be in a position to do that again. So tough decision. I don't envy the decision ahead of you, but I want to make very clear that this is not a situation where anybody just sat on this thing, and now here we are scrambling. That is absolutely not the case. This thing was dead in the water, and, you know, Governmental Affairs Department salvaged it and worked hard and figured out where the rest of the money was going to come from, and here we are.
I can remember, I can remember vividly, and these two gentlemen here were with me on this council at the time that Mr. Casey announced the nine million dollar grant, and we had already had various meetings about trying to pass Measure M, which was a half-cent sales tax, which failed. And the part of that was, we didn't have any money. And even at that time, we knew that we had a problem with fire. We knew that the fire budget was needing funds, and we were in trouble on that. But I remember, we knew we had a problem, and the first thought I had when we approved it, approved the acceptance of the grant, is I thought, well, where are we going to get nine million dollars, because we're short on fire? That was my thought. And we voted, the three of us up here, Councilmember Venable and Garner weren't here, but we approved it, knowing that we didn't, we had a problem. Well, I knew we had a problem, and I think everybody else knew we had a problem. Now, I will say that when we approved the Y-PAC, I was here with the Y-PAC, and we went out for budget on the Y-PAC long before we built the Y-PAC, and we got preliminary budget numbers of nine million dollars. And then fast forward two years, when we actually went out to get bids, we ended up being three million dollars in the hole. Instead of nine, it was twelve. I kept using the term sixteen million dollars to build it, but Mr. Casey would always correct me and say, well, it's only twelve. But it was still three billion dollars short. And I remember, if you, the time that it takes from the time you budget to the time you get bids and build, it always, it's always higher. And I don't know the difference between design-build and getting bids to build it, but the delay in this situation here was not the fault of anybody, except that we just realized shortly after you came on board that we had a budget problem. And then that caused panic in the community. Oh my gosh, we're going to lose the nine million dollars. And I will agree that you folks have done an outstanding job in finding the funds. Hopefully, we found, the funds will stay there, but finding the funds to do this. So I don't think it's a matter of anybody drug their feet. It's a matter of we had, we discovered a problem, and we worked our way through it, and we got here. And that's where we're at today. So I commend staff for doing such a great job on that. But I don't know the difference between design-build. Design-bill, I assume, is you start out with a contractor, and then they go ahead and charge you as they go, as opposed to getting bids all at once and then starting the process? I don't know. I don't know the difference.
If I may, so the difference between your standard design and construction process and design-build is that with the standard process, we would go through the process of selecting a consultant to do, to complete the engineering and design, prepare the plans and the construction contract documents. That's step one. And then step two would be to go out to bid, just like any other public works project for the construction portion. With the progressive design-build process that we're proposing, we... that we're proposing, we, based on qualifications, we seek a design-build entity, which is a team that is comprised of the, the engineers, the architects, and also the, the contractor who's gonna be building it, and you, you go through a progressive process where you come up with a conceptual plan, you, and, and you go through different levels, right, the twenty percent engineering design, thirty, forty, fifty, seventy, and as Joe mentioned, once you get to the seventy percent, that's where the, the design-build entity, the team will provide a maximum, maximum guaranteed price, indicating that no matter, no matter what the, what the process is, when you construct the project, that's the most that you're gonna pay for the construction of the project, and of course, there's different, there's several benefits of going through that process, because you work together with a design-build entity to ensure early on in the process whether you're going in the right direction or not, and there is the ability at the thirty percent level to revisit the whole project, and at the thirty percent level, as Joe mentioned, you may, for the purpose of this, this example, if you enter into a million dollar contract for the design, engineering, architecture process, you get to the thirty percent level, you might spend thirty percent of that billion dollars, thirty, three hundred thousand dollars, and at that point, you can decide whether the overall, whether the construction cost is gonna be feasible to move forward with, so that's one of the things that we, we can build in the contract to where we can, we can essentially hit the stop button at any point, and more specifically, the thirty percent level, so that, that's the biggest difference, you, you have the ability, you know, for, for a project like this, as Joe mentioned, Riverside County and other public agencies have gone through this process, through the design-build process for these unique process, projects, if it's more of a standard project, you wouldn't wanna go through the design-build process because it's more cost-effective to go through the traditional method.
And let me add too, I think right now, if the city moves forward on this project, it is incredibly important that we protect ourselves from the kind of overruns the city saw on the Y-PAC, right, we cannot sustain millions of dollars' worth of unexpected cost overruns on a project, and so this design-build process provides us a guaranteed price that contractually cannot be exceeded, so we know what our worst-case scenario is on the project, now, we may pay a little bit of a premium on that, you know, we, we may pay more than, you know, but, we just absolutely, in my mind, cannot risk millions of dollars of cost overruns.
I'm not entirely convinced we can sustain the project at all, given that we were a difference of three thousand eight hundred votes from losing Measure S, shutting down a fire station, and cutting our police department a week ago, and that's not a landslide victory in the way of taxpayers supporting the, the spending of money in our city. Read, read, read down to the bottom of the staff report under fiscal impact, I wanna highlight, I wanna ask some questions on this one. By approving the agreement, the city is restating its intention to contribute the three million dollars towards the construction of the project, and an additional two-point five million, an estimate, towards the, the land preparation, I guess, which will bring us to about five-point-five million, however, approving this agreement does not commit the city to building the project if the cost estimates come in over budget or if we lose funding, my question is, by approving this agreement, how locked in are we on the project if simply we are a few months post-election, we have a new council deciding things, and we decide this is not the project we're gonna move forward with, where, where's our financial impact, our fiscal impact in that scenario in, in first quarter of next year?
I think if you move for, the question is, if you move forward today, what's the fiscal impact next quarter?
My question is, if we move forward today, and for no other reason than the new council decides this project is not worth funding, do we, have we, have we lost money by approving this agreement?
There, there would be no expenditure of money until the design-build award comes back to you at the end of July, January, or early February of next year, that's at which point we'll come back also with a budget adjustment to authorize spending, so theoretically, at that meeting or before, the new council can reconsider or change direction, or, or just vote down the design-build contract.
Yeah, but honestly, this council or next council, I can't see anybody in their right mind not going forward with this project, I mean.
I, I feel like if, if we were in a position where we were, or we were, thought we were two years ago with a fifty-four million dollar surplus, and we were the award-winning financial city we thought we were, certainly, a library is warranted, and as, and as we've heard time and time again from the friends of the library, how critically important it is to the youth of our community, to people who are seeking higher education, job, jobs, tutoring, advanced education, I, I'm not, I'm not an enemy of the library, but I am, I'm concerned, Measure S was not our saving grace, Measure S is estimated to produce a, how much? Well, we'll get there in, in one of the upcoming agenda items, but it's not the entire deficit, I think, we, we barely escaped the, by, by with the skin of our teeth on shutting down critical public safety resources, there, there was not an idle threat, this council voted yes on that, it was already done, should the measure fail, we have to do these things cuz we have to have a balanced budget, we're not sitting high on the hog now, gentlemen, we have, we have enough to sustain, but we are, we are still, when we get to the, to item thirteen, think decisions have to be made by this council to seriously reconsider every project that we've, that are in the hopper and moving forward, again, I'm, I'm, I'm not an enemy of the library, we do have public speaker slips on the matter, I'd like to hear what our citizens have to say on the matter.
I got two more things, if you don't mind.
Go ahead.
So, Joe, you said something about the design might be coming back around January or February, so sixty days, sixty days-ish for them to do design?
No, no, the contract to select somebody to do the design.
Okay, so, realistically, timeframe for design, how long does that turn around? Cuz we're looking at, what, a year and two months to go from here to handing over the keys and ready to go, right? Before this, we have to meet this date, so, I'm not in construction, but the little bit that I've been around it, deadlines are very rarely ever hit, they're pushed back, so, from design, and then realistically, timeframes to actually construct the building, is a year even feasible?
The, the document that was advertised to, to seek the qualifications and proposals for the design-build entity, it includes a tentative schedule with the word of the contract in late January, early February, and, and then starting construction in November of two thousand twenty-five, with completion in March of two thousand twenty-six, and as Joe mentioned, a few of the design-build entity firms have already expressed their concern that that is a tight schedule, and, you know, they're, they're willing, since the document is just released to the public recently, they're, they're looking at the schedule, they're looking at everything to see how that fits, fits in, so, we're hoping to get some more feedback from them, and I, I believe that their qualification, submittal and their proposal is going to reflect that expedited schedule, and I also feel like they will provide a, another proposal based on some flexibility in the schedule, so, our thought is that we'll go through the process, we'll receive their submittals in early January, we'll review them, and then come back to city council with a recommendation in, in late January, early February, and included in that recommendation is some of the things that we find, you know, after going through this process, of what the cost will be based on the schedule that is identified in order to meet the state grant funding requirement, and if there is flexibility for more time, what the cost, what the tentative cost would be to go through that process, so, in short, I, I feel like we'll have more information to present to city council in late January, early February, to be able to answer those questions, but again, those design-build entity firms have expressed concern with the tentative schedule as it's laid out, and what's driving that tentative schedule is the state grant funding deadline of March of two thousand twenty-six.
Thank you.
We don't need, oh, I'm sorry.
One other quick question, and this is kinda to Justin's point with the finances, if for some reason we didn't move forward, the fact that we've been awarded a grant, does that hurt our chances down the road to get a grant from the state, provided that there is one that we can apply for, cuz it's just not guaranteed to get money on a grant?
I don't, I don't believe it would hurt our chances of receiving a, a state grant, I, I think the state library would probably be very reluctant to, and actually, you know, the nine million dollars is really the highest amount that was awarded by, by the state library, it was, it was a big deal, the previous county CEO helped, helped lobby hard with the state library to, to get, to get the amount that high, his background was in libraries, he had been the county librarian at one point, and so was a pet project of his as well, so, I, I don't, it's not like we would be blackballed from all state grants, I think we could probably forget about a state library grant for a while, you know, our, our other partners that we've, you know, sought grants from may be unhappy as well, but we, 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 we apply and receive and manage a wide range of different grants on all kinds of different programs, and most of those would not be impacted.
Thank you.
You know, I'm, I'm, I want our library, I, I really do, and I'm just kinda disappointed that we are throwing money at it right now and stuff, in which we could have been saving money the whole time, I don't think that, that due diligence of each one of us is going out there to try to save us money all the time and stuff, because we don't even have the grounds money, right? This is just for the facility, so what are we doing about that? How are we gonna save money on that?
So, we're still working to find as many funding sources as we can, which is one of the reasons we went to Congressman Obernolte with that request, and we did start the request at one-point-eight million, which is the max, and he gave us five hundred, which is still something, however, if we do not find another project partner to help defray the cost of the site improvements, it will come from the general fund, there's no other way.
Yeah, I just, like I said, I just think that we, I think we dropped the ball on this, I think that we could have went to a designer, maybe kinda cut those costs where we didn't have the premium, you know, and maybe been talking to him and stuff, you know, about certain projects, is, you know, I mean, this project, to save us money.
If we're, if we're committed to nine million dollars anyways, how are we gonna save money on that?
It's going to design and build, so you, you design and build, you have a premium that you pay a little bit more money than you pay when you design and build something, when, instead of going to a regular engineer to engineer it and everything like that, so instead of a million bucks, we could be paying five hundred grand, so there's five hundred thousand bucks we saved on that.
But we have to spend nine million dollars.
I understand, but I'm a...
I, I'm, am I, am I missing it? We have to spend nine million, we don't get to try to cut that away?
Right, but I think the argument is, we would get more for our, our millions because we're, we're, the unit cost of the, the inputs is a little lower.
Correct.
So are we deciding to move this forward tonight, to either kill the project or move it forward, is that, is that what item two here is?
So what's tonight is the project use agreement, so if, by approving this, this will move forward for all the project partners to agree to this, and then that, that'll move forward, and then you'll have a second chance at the time that we award, you award the design-build, however, if you do not approve this contract, then it would effectively end the project.
Would you have brought this project forward had Measure S not presumably passed?
Yeah, we would be obligated to, at the end of the day, this is a city council decision.
Is that what, we were waiting on to see that, how that looked, before you brought it forward to us?
No, we have been negotiating this agreement with, with all of the parties, I think it is helpful that the decision is made with the backdrop of the city's financial picture.
So if we pass this right now, we can go into January, and if it came, we, we got all the bids back, and it was way too much out of our budget and stuff, we can kill the project then, right?
Correct.
So I'll make a motion to pass.
Hold on, we, we have public comment, we have speakers who'd like to hear on the matter, Amy Simmons, followed by Dr. Hanson Wong.
Amy Simmons, I'm here speaking on behalf of Ukaypa Valley Friends of the Library, so I've spoken here quite a few times, haven't I? And I ran into a council member last month, and I said to him, I just don't know what to say anymore, I saw us get a nine million dollar grant, I was elated, and there's been nothing but turmoil in the city of Ukaypa since that day, having nothing to do with, with that grant, but it's not my fault, it's not any of these people's fault out here, it's not your fault, but it happened, okay? So now, you have the chance to do the right thing, you could, you could say, let's go get another grant in the future, how often are library grants offered? What are the chances that Ukaypa would be offered the largest grant out of this particular program that was awarded, but you got it? I just sat here and listened to Joe Prodetto say that the lifespan of a library, such as what we would build, is about twenty-five years, and I just came from a building that is fifty-five years old and still serving this city, we deserve better. You guys have sat and listened to us beg for more space for tutoring and, and, and learning, and for programs and children, and I begged you guys to come by the library and see what kind of programs are offered, and how crowded it is, and the smiles on the faces of children and families that have almost nothing, but they're never asked for a dime to come in our doors. You guys have the opportunity tonight to do the right thing, now, I can't, I can't contradict what's been said here about design builds, but I have done some reading on design builds, and one thing that I read was it is supposed to be a little bit more cost-effective because these contractors that come in with the proposals and the, and the architects, it's not the first library they've built, they're bidding because they've done it before in similar communities, and they can do what works from other projects onto ours, that being said, if you vote to move forward tonight, I beseech you to consider, to consider some outdoor space like a courtyard, which would mitigate the loss of square footage, and also to revisit the thought of having room naming opportunities for private investors or, or benefactors, which other libraries use, to mitigate the, further the city's costs, and one last thing, I know it was mentioned that Melanie Roscoe, county librarian, is here, but I would like you to also note that Robin Holly, San Bernardino County library manager is here, and Kathy Burns, Ukaypa head librarian is here, and they are, are fully vested in having a library for our community, we deserve it, thanks.
Thank you. Dr. Wong.
Thank you, city council, actually, she did a yeoman's job of giving us the reasons why we need the library, which was what I'm gonna speak on, plus, the mayor also gave multiple reasons too, it, it's important for the education, and for the entertainment, and for the growth of our city, including jobs, to have this, and, but I have to consider some of the things that Councilman Venable said about looking at the cost, so, in deciding which way to do it, you know, you might have to think, well, are we looking for escape routes to quit, and, but costing us a little more, or do we say, this is what we need, we find the best way of doing it, get a contract for the whole thing throughout the entire time, and complete it, so, anyway, I feel that we should do this, and I implore you to help the children and citizens of the city for it.
Thank you.
Thank you, sir. Mr. Westwood, followed by Mr. Kevin Miskin.
I didn't expect to speak on this tonight, but thank you, Mr. Venable, for already making the motion to go forward, thank you, Mr. Duncan, for saying, we can't... Thank you, Mr. Duncan, for saying, we can't walk away from nine million dollars. There's no reason why the fundraising can't continue. Go to Congressman Pete Aguilar. He's a graduate from Ucaipa High School. You're going to put that library right next to Ucaipa High School? I bet you, he got three million dollars for the Roosevelt Bowl in San Bernardino. He can get you some money too. This is a matter of priorities and I reflect on the fact that I drive up Calamaesha Boulevard and I see a beautiful new library being built in Calamaesha. And I say, why should we settle for less? This is a matter of priorities. We can't shut down. We have to prioritize. You have the safety valve in January with a new council. You just need to move forward now. I encourage you to move forward and, and vote for this project. And I know it's hard because you had Measure S and that whole nine yards. But in speaking with Mr. White a while ago, about a month or two ago, we, we, we did consider that, you know, budgets ebb and wane. I think in February of last year, if I'm not mistaken, the budget deficits was projected around 2.2 million dollars. And then it rose to 7.3 million dollars. And, you know, that's a big, big deficit there. And I wonder, where does that money come? Where did it go? But, you know, we have new increment coming in and you have new fees with BRTech. You got new fees coming left and right from sales tax coming, not just from the 1% increase, not one cent, but 1% increase. But you also have new sales tax coming just from the natural cost of goods and services and products in, in Ucaipa and the new building boom that's happening here. So have courage, move forward. You can't shut down. This is about priorities. This is about our kids. This is about education. This is about a nine million dollar grant you've already gotten, $500,000 from the state. You're set and you're posed for success here. Have the courage to please move forward. If I were one of you and I had the opportunity in a heartbeat, I'd vote for this. Thank you.
Thank you, sir. Mr. Miskin?
Kevin Miskin, Ivy Avenue. I support all the sentiments, sentiments that have been raised here. I think we need a library. We, we raised our children going to the library every single week with our kids. And it shows in where they are today. We have five children, five are all college graduates and four are doctors. But the youngest is a girl and her, she's a college graduate, but her husband is going to be a doctor as well. He's getting ready to start medical school. But I wanted to point something out here. I, I'd like you, because it may come back that we can only afford 16,000 square feet. I think that a stipulation ought to be made in the contract that they design the library such that it can be expanded and that there's room for expansion. There's a phase two that could be added where we could add 5,000 to 10,000 square feet to it. But that needs to be considered certainly in the design. The second thing is, is how much could we gain if we sell the existing library? Could we get three more million dollars? Could we get two, three more million dollars in that plus donations? And I think there are a lot of people that would donate and we could cover it with that. I wasn't one who, who voted for Measure S, but, you know, I think that we can make this work. I, I, I point out that we've already spent in the last three years fiscal year 2023, 2024, and projected for 2025, an 80% increase in salaries and benefits for the employees of Ucaipa. 80%, $6 million more than 2023. And I think if we start rolling back and become a little bit more fiscally responsible, that we can, we can come up with the money for a library for our, for our youth, our kids, investing in the future of our city. Thanks.
Thanks, sir. Motion down the table by Mayor Protim Venable. Is there a second?
What, what's the motion?
To...
Approve.
Yeah, approve the library project and use agreement between City of Ucaipa, Ucaipa, Calamaesha, John Uniti, County of San Bernardino.
I'll second.
Second by Councilman Thorpe. Any further discussion? All those in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed? Hearing none, the motion carries 4-2-0.
Can you come back out now?
You can come back out. Item number 11, reorganization of Code Enforcement Division. Mr. City Manager.
Yes, Mr. Mayor, thank you. This is just a report to the council. It's not an action item, but we wanted to update you and the community on some impending changes here, pretty big changes. So it has been the, the clear desire of the city council to enhance the city's business-friendly and resident-friendly approach. Over the past two years, we have streamlined application processes at City Hall with the implementation of Tyler Technologies' suite of software programs. With the approval of updates to the municipal code, we are eliminating the requirement to obtain a city business license for the majority of business categories. With the implementation of the Sunshine Ordinance and increased communication efforts, information is more readily available and easier to access than at any point in the city's history. But code enforcement is another area where we see considerable room for improvement. The city regularly receives complaints from residents and business owners pertaining to code enforcement practices. One example of a common complaint is that notices of violation and citations are often sent in the mail without any prior attempt to approach the resident or business owner and explain the violations. Our goal should be education and compliance, not playing gotcha. Another issue that needs addressing is the manner in which citations are issued. It is not enough to simply post a notice on a property or send it first-class mail without receiving documented evidence that the property owner has received the violation. And then when no response is received, simply issuing notice after notice without end. That approach does not produce results and it has led to a tremendous backlog of citations. Currently, the city has approximately 579 active cases. There are 90 code cases that currently have 10 or more citations or notices. Combine these 90 cases have 3,712 citations. The largest number of citations for one case is 107. Just keep sending them. Keep sending notice after notice without, without, without a response. The average number of citations per case is 41.2. It is clear that we need to change our approach. On the flip side, for just over a year now, the Code Enforcement Division has had one officer who works as part of the Solutions Oriented Policing, or SOP, team, which is housed in the Public Safety Department and led by Public Safety Manager Trevor Benson. This team has been highly successful and has demonstrated an ability to effectively address serious health and safety issues and to quickly close code cases. In general, code enforcement departments throughout the state are increasingly faced with having to handle more serious issues, such as houses that have been taken over by homeless and used as places to deal drugs. This is causing code enforcement departments to shift in the direction of serious law enforcement and away from being more clerical in nature. In Ucaipa, we have become much more aggressive in cracking down on drug houses and other properties that pose significant health and safety risks. It is time that our code enforcement practices adjust to reflect this reality. And so effective the 16th of this month, the following, following reorganization of our Code Enforcement Division will go into effect. The Code Enforcement Division will be moved from the Development Services Department to the Public Safety Department. As such, it will report directly to Public Safety Manager Trevor Benson, who reports to the Assistant City Manager. A code enforcement manual is being drafted by the Public Safety Department in conjunction with the City Attorney's Office and Human Resources. We hope to have that before the council in the next couple of months. But in the meantime, a memorandum has been issued to all personnel in the division explaining changes in approach and expectations that will be implemented beginning the 16th. As an example, a key change is the expectation of in-person contact whenever possible prior to the issuing of a notice or citation. We want our code enforcement officers to not just be enforcing the law, but to be good ambassadors of the city. For, for many business owners and residents, that contact with a code enforcement officer is the first time they've ever had any contact at all with City Hall. It ought to be a friendly contact to say, hey, listen, I'm your friendly neighborhood code enforcement officer. You're not in trouble. We just noticed these, these issues and we're here to help you come into compliance. Now, if the, you know, receive resistance or compliance is not achieved, then we look at official notices and citations and stepping up enforcement. Body-warm cameras will be issued to code enforcement. Very often, we get complaints about officers who have been maybe too aggressive or rude and we have no evidence one way or the other. Body cameras will protect both the public and our officers and be good for the city in terms of liability. This isn't specific to code, to code enforcement, but organization-wide, all city vehicles will be fitted with devices that, that report back vehicle diagnostics, but also track location so that we can keep track of where our vehicles are and what condition they're in. And we are stepping up our documentation methods across the board. But we're confident these changes will result in more effective enforcement and at the same time lead to greater customer satisfaction. Again, no actions required on this item. This is a report to the council. We wanted you and the community to know that these changes are coming later this week. Happy to answer any questions you may have.
By far, the biggest, the largest amount of emails and phone calls I get and confident my colleagues receive them as well is this lack of service-first, which is a, some of the county employees in the room will remember an old county CEO that coined that phrase, "service-first," and made it very clear that everybody works in customer service when you work for government. Then, taking it a step further, while most people are very cordial, even, even pointed cordial about their complaints, I have a Army veteran contractor of a father who's substantially less cordial when he talks to me about his complaints about the city. And I still get scolded by my father for his disappointment in certain things. So there was a time, I'm told, that our code enforcement officer, one, was a joyous sight to see on our city streets. She would, she would arrive. She would make contact with the neighborhood. She would even then say sometimes, if we just move this stuff back 10 feet, you're, you're, you're in compliance. So let me get my gloves and I'll help you move this stuff. The goal was to gain voluntary compliance and be, be a community member, not just this faceless, nameless creature that exists and dwells within City Hall, all the, all, altogether unavailable to be contacted. I've heard it in closed session for the last two years or more, that this is a desire that the county, that the council has, that we see a more service-first approach. Because we, we need it. It has to happen. We, we demand exceptionalism of our city employees and, and we have to have that. So I'm, I'm, I feel, I feel like it's been a long time coming. I'm glad it's finally here. I know I've heard my colleagues on the dais say this before, so I'm, I'm sure they'll echo similar sentiments if they decide to speak. But thank you and let's get to work. Being that, that pillar of government that helps our citizens and not just looks to keep them under our thumb while they're in violation, so.
Absolutely agree with all that he said. This has been my goal or one of my goals for a long time is to, is to get the code enforcement under a different umbrella than, than community development. And I think it's a great idea. And so thank you very much. And I commend Trevor. He, he's just the right guy for the job. And I think that, I think it's going to work out real well.
So there's a vote to, to receive and file this?
No vote needed. Just, just a report.
It says vote. I'm bowing. It says vote. All right, receive and file. Thank you, sir. Item number 12, fiscal year 2324 preliminary budget review. Director of Finance, Mr. Phil White.
Good evening, Mayor, Mayor Protim, members of City Council. This item is to discuss the final budget results and preliminary actual results for fiscal year 2024. So it's the year ended June 30th of 2024. All the deficits, the 7.3 that's been mentioned, that's a fiscal '25 budget deficit. We're going back all the way to fiscal '24. So we work in multiple budgets all the time. This is the budget closeout for the year ended June 30th, 2024. At a previous meeting, I was discussing the budget lifecycle. I, I talked about three things, the, the planning of the budget that happens between June or January and June each year, the adoption that happens, happens in June. And then we execute the budget as the spending plan from July 1st through the following June 30th. I failed to discuss a fourth phase, which is reporting. So tonight, we're talking about budget reporting, a budget closeout, and it's the fourth phase of the budget lifecycle. So way back in June of 2023, the fiscal year '24 budget was adopted by you. At that point in time, there were deficits in the general fund, the FIRE fund, and several other funds throughout. The general fund had a $2 million deficit. The FIRE fund had a $2.4 million deficit at the time of adoption. And that whole list of funds or other funds that are, get less name recognition than the general fund. So we had budgets or deficits all over the place. That's the list. You might ask, why don't we have all of our deficits in one easy-to-find spot in our budget? And we do. It's the all-fund summary page. And what you can see there is a lot of red highlights. Each one of those red highlights is a fund with a deficit. And the way that we define a deficit is making it as simple as possible. If equity decreases through the year, if our starting equity is more than our ending equity, we consider that to have a budget deficit. So each one of those funds had a deficit at the beginning of, or at budget adoption of the fiscal year '24. Each one of our funds also has a budget summary in the adopted budget document. This is the, the general fund. We, we use terms like inflows and outflows, revenues and transfers ins and transfers in are considered inflows. Expenditures and transfers out are considered outflows. So if outflows are more than inflows, we have a deficit. If inflows are more than outflows, we have a surplus. One key item that I did want to point out, so here's our $2 million deficit in the general fund at the proposed budget. This budget is proposed and then adopted at the same meeting. $2 million deficit, but the number that I want to point out is general fund expenditures and transfers out. You add those two together and the total is 34.7 million, if my math was correct. So we had outflows of $34.7 million at budget adoption that resulted in a budgetary deficit of $2 million in the general fund. As we were executing the budget throughout the fiscal year, we come to you from time to time and say, we need adjustments here. We need adjustments there. All of those are adjusting our original adopted budget. And ultimately, when we're done with adjustments, it becomes our revised budget. So in between budget adoption of our $34.7 million in outflows and our revised budget of $40 million in outflows, we had a ton of budget adjustments as we went through. Some of the key ones are listed over here. Tropical Storm Hillary resulted in damage. We came to you right after the storm and, and requested a $5 million budget adjustment. As we went through the process, there was a subsequent downward adjustment of $2.7 million. So the net adjustment for Tropical Storm Hillary in fiscal '24 was $2.3 million added to the budget. The STARS programming had a ramp up in programming. The STARS program is also 100% funded. And so there, that's a net zero on the equity side. But from a cost standpoint, we increased, asked for an increase of a million dollars in STARS. And then in our Development Services side of the house, Building and Safety had a $700,000 increase that was approved by council as we went through the process. Building and Safety is a revenue split, so that cost, the other side of that cost is a revenue. And so it was a net gain for the city as well. But on the cost side or outflow side, we went from 34.7 up to a little over $40 million. That deficit numbers that started at $2 million in the general fund ended up at, from a budgetary standpoint, $4.3 million budgetary deficit for fiscal '24. So to simplify, we had a revised outflow number budgetary of $40 million. Our preliminary actual, and I say preliminary because our actual, what we actually spent is preliminary until we finalize our audit. Our auditors are coming out in a couple of weeks. Once that's finalized, we will issue financial statements and our actual numbers will be finalized. But preliminarily, our outflows are $36 million from the general fund. And so what we can say is we, we spent less than budget. Typically, in the real world or in, in private business, that's, that's a good thing. Your costs are down. From a municipal side, it, it means that we didn't deliver all the services that we planned to. So either services weren't, weren't provided, like in the case of Public Safety, our police contract, we give police credits for deputies that are out, that the service wasn't provided. So they'll give us a credit. for deputies that are out, that the service wasn't provided, so they'll give us a credit on our bill. So, ultimately, our spending is less. It also could mean that we didn't get to a certain phase in a project. If we're building something, we just didn't do it this year, so we're gonna do it later on in a future year. But ultimately, we spent, our spending plan called for $40 million of outflows and we spent $36 million. So, we didn't necessarily save money or, or, but what we did on a preliminary basis, our actual costs results are $4 million under budget in the general fund. Same thing in the FIRE fund. We had a $2.4 million deficit at the time of adoption. There's our in, out, our outflow numbers of about $8 million and our inflow number down below. This one's a lot simpler. We had a lot fewer budget adjustments as we went through the process, but we just went to $8.1 million on the outflow side. And then, our actual, our preliminary actual costs are just under $8 million in the FIRE fund. And so, we had a spending estimated, or actual spending of $8 million and a spending plan for $8.1 million. And so, we were under budget by about $100,000. Again, our auditors will be out in a couple of weeks and we'll get you final numbers, but that's on a preliminary basis. That's where we are. As we go through the year-end closing process, it gives us an opportunity to do cleanup. As we're, we spend money from, from different buckets, different accounting funds. And as we go through the closing process, resources need to be moved from where they are to where they were spent from. And so, all of those, we have inter-fund transfers that are, that are necessary. Attachment one lists all of the cleanup inter-fund transfers that are being requested from a, from a budget authorization standpoint. All of those that are listed are, are considered immaterial by management. The, the outflow from the general fund is approximately $15,000. And the way attachment one is structured is you only see the outflow side. If you were to go to the next column and see the inflow, you'll see amounts going back to the general fund that exceed the $15,000. But, we're, we're looking at the outflow side of it and getting authorization from the outflow side. So, that describes attachment one in your, in your packet. And then, just a reminder, we do work in multiple fiscal years for budgets. So, not, not to confuse anybody, we're talking again about fiscal 24. Going up, the 7.3 was mentioned earlier tonight. That's the fiscal 25 operating deficit. That's still intact. Nothing that we've talked about impacts the fiscal year 25 budget. This is strictly fiscal year 24. And then, we haven't even started talking about fiscal 26, but when we get to our next item and the impacts of the Measure S vote, as we start planning for fiscal 26, it will, we'll be discussing that tonight as well. So, tonight, we're talking about three different budget years. This item specifically is fiscal 24. We had budgets in fiscal 24 and fiscal 25. And not to ruin the surprise, but we're not anticipating a deficit in fiscal 26, so. This recommendation to you is to amend the fiscal 24 budget to incorporate attachment one. The numbers that I talked about earlier all incorporate those numbers as well. So, the numbers that I, that I went through already incorporate attachment one, and we're asking for approval of, of those, those items as recommendation number two.
Thank you, sir. Questions with staff?
I think Megan can help you out making money with the Autumn Fest that she made, so.
She did make money this year.
She did make money this year, so that was a good thing.
Yeah, that, that was great. That was fiscal 25, though, so.
Check you. See that?
He did.
Just settle down.
No, that, Autumn Fest was a, was fantastic. From a operational standpoint, it was great, but financially, yep, it was outstanding. Best ever.
Is there a motion to approve the item?
I make a motion and we approve item number 12.
Motion made by Councilman Duncan.
I'll second.
Second by Councilman Garner. Any further discussion? All those in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed? Hearing now the motion carries five, zero. Thank you, sir. And don't go anywhere. We got you next. Item number 13, Measure S update.
Alright, so about a year ago, the City Council provided direction to temporarily hold service levels and directed staff to compile a funding option for city services. Staff, staff was also tasked with identifying the maximum amount of services that could be funded with current levels of revenue. So, basically, our cut line, what, what is on the table to be cut if we can't increase revenues? We, that's a terrible font combination. I apologize about that. We basically had three options. One, that wasn't really an option, was to ignore the situation and keep going, moving forward. We had a slash services to existing levels. And then, we could, as a third option, increase revenues. And so, over the course of the last year, staff put together a, a, a funding option, a series of different revenue increase options. We also put together a list of potential cuts that would need to occur should the funding option not be successful. As we went through the process, we had several different funding options. The city is pursuing many of them. The biggest one, the most significant one, was in fact Measure S. It was on the ballot in, in November. And that would provide an estimated $6 million of funding for the cause and required a 50% plus one vote to pass. Leading up to November, staff was working diligently to answer questions from the community, provide data to the community, clarify the city's role and services that were being provided. And the question that we asked the community was, "Do you like the services provided by the city? And do you like them enough to feel the pain of funding those services?" Results are unofficial. I did want to point that out. But, but from a measure standpoint, 60% is, is overwhelming. And we are anticipating that it's, it's going to pass. Before I, before I talk about the next steps, I do want to take a minute and, and thank all you ChiPins for valuing the community, for giving us the opportunity to earn their trust. And basically, the, the look and feel of Ucaipa as we were working so hard to answer all the questions, we really wanted to point out that, you know, fraud, waste, and abuse is not, it's not a thing in Ucaipa. Every dollar that is spent, it's on a service and it's tied to the people that are out there doing things for Ucaipa, such as Autumn Fest. And so, so we worked hard to get that message out. And when I saw that vote, you know, leading up to it, I was, I was nervous. I was expecting 50/50. 60% was, was overwhelming and shocking, and I thought that the, the count was wrong, but it, it goes back to people really like Ucaipa and they like, I think that they value the services. There's a, there's a distrust in, in, in City Hall right now, but with that vote, I do believe that we have an opportunity to, to earn the trust. And I appreciate the ChiPins for giving us that opportunity. Alright, so, now that we know our path, we are slamming on the gas moving forward. But, there's a delay when revenues are going to start being recognized. And so, I do want to take this opportunity to reset where we are in the process, when we can anticipate funding starting, starting to come in and what our next steps are. As we go through this process, so I'll split them up between financially and operationally. Financially, we're gonna start, we have two, two different types of revenues. One is budgetary, or budget estimates. And then, the second one is actual revenue flowing in. So, from a, from a, from the actual revenue start flowing in, there's the operative date. And that is, I think the number is 100 and day, 110 days, at least 110 days after the vote, and it's the first day of the quarter. And so, that means April 1st, 2025, would be the earliest date that retailers in the city of Ucaipa can start collecting that amount. So, April 1st, 2025 is the operative date. There's a two-month delay between when those funds are remitted to the state and then allocated back to the city of Ucaipa. So, we're looking at a June timeframe for dollars to start flowing back to the city. Again, the annualized, the dollar amount is estimated to be 6 million. But, obviously, in fiscal 25, we're not gonna get our first funding until the very last month. And so, we're not getting $6 million in fiscal 25. We're getting 1/12 of 6 million. As we move forward, building the fiscal year 26 budget, the estimates will be incorporated into that, that budget that's, will be adopted in, in June of 25 for fiscal 26. So, from a financial standpoint, budget will be, we'll, we'll see those changes in fiscal 26. And from an operating standpoint, we will get one month in fiscal 25 and then the full 12 months in fiscal 26. Operationally, the whole idea with Measure S and all of the other supplementary revenue streams was to fix an existing budgetary deficit problem. And so, it's, we don't have a surplus of funds. What, what the passage of S means is that we get to operate as we are. We, we're not cutting service levels. We, service levels are intact. And so, operationally, you won't see differences right away because now we have, we're funding our services. And for the unfunded component of fiscal 25, we had already planned for that as part of the budget adoption. We were directed to say, "Hey, we're gonna use up reserves to hold it until we can figure it out." And now, we have it figured out. But no changes in, in, in operations and service levels as a result of the passing, which is a good thing because we're not cutting them. So, while it takes a while to, for the revenue to start flowing in, behind the scenes, there's a lot of things that need to get done in the meantime. And so, we're already starting with the communication, getting things submitted so that come April 1st, we're good to go and it's implemented. As we were talking with the community, one of the questions that kept coming up is, "How do we know that the city isn't going to make the same mistakes and end up right back in the same spot?" And the answer that I had over and over again is, "Yeah, we've, we've gotta do a better job of, of, of long-term financial planning." We've been working towards a long-term financial plan. What that is, is doing a better job of forecasting out not just one year, but multiple years, forecasting revenues and expenditures, determining the financial impact of priority when council has their objectives and goals, doing a better job of saying, "Okay, here's the financial impact of what that's going to be, not only for that year, but for the next five years, for the next 10 years. What does that look like?" We don't want to, we don't want to put something together and then not have funding for it the next budget cycle. And then, but ultimately, the, the big benefit with the long-term financial plan is achieving organizational alignment. And the way that a long-term financial plan achieves alignment is by plugging it into an overarching strategic plan. Now, that strategic plan is also something that the city does not currently have. And so, as we look through, you know, learning from our mistakes and doing a better job of not getting back, I, when I, when I thought, every time I heard, "How do we know we're not gonna be in the, the same spot?", I thought of all the bad choices I've had coming back from Vegas and saying, "See you soon. I'm gonna come right back here and do, and do that again." It wasn't me. It was, Brian Blackerby makes the bad decisions in Vegas, not me. But, but so, we're not planning to be, we're not gonna be back here soon. We're never gonna be back here again. But in order to do that, we need to lock in our long-term financial plan. And ultimately, we need an overarching strategic plan. As we, as we think about learning from our mistakes and doing a better job of making decisions, you know, a couple of quotes came up, but I like this one from the, the legendary investor Warren Buffett. "It's good to learn from your own mistakes, but it's better to learn from other people's." We, you know, we, we've, there's plenty of, of, of learning opportunities that we have going through this process. But also, there's other communities out there that have really, you know, we stubbed our toe. Other communities have, have, have fallen over and broken legs and, and we can learn from, from those things as well. I like, I like Warren Buffett's quote. Other people, you know, they take their advice from, from, from geniuses. If we can't solve our problems with the same thinking that we used in creating them. There's a lot of good quotes, but 312 electoral votes don't lie. And everybody takes good advice from a, from a pretty face and a good dancer, so. Always try to learn from other people's mistakes, not your, not your own. It's much cheaper that way. But ultimately, what a strategic plan is, is it articulates what we want to be. It designs that vision. And it identifies our goals and objectives. And so, it's, it's something that is for current decision-makers, it's an important thing to tie into. For future decision-makers, they're not recreating the wheel. They're saying, "Hey, we already solved the, the question of what Ucaipa wants to be. How are we gonna get there?" There's a lot of good benefits that come from strategic plans. Some of them are establishing a community vision, enhancing decision-making, giving you the information that you need, saying, "Okay, we're gonna make this decision. Is this, does this align with the plan that we've already adopted? This is what we want Ucaipa to be, look like? Is this decision gonna further, further us?" It prioritizes our resources. If we're saying, "Hey, we, we can, we only have so many dollars. How are we gonna spend this?" Well, our, our strategic plan says this is how much we're spending on this activity. We've already got the answer for it. It makes decision-making much easier. It improves operational efficiency. Everybody's pulling on the same end of the rope. But ultimately, the, I think that the biggest benefit, especially now in Ucaipa, is having that plan, it creates community trust. The, the community says, "Hey, here's our plan. This is what we want to do. You guys go and execute that plan and get us there." A lot of good things that come out of that strategic plan. It does take a lot of time. It requires community involvement. Everybody has to know, okay, as a community, what do we want to look like? And that takes, it's a heavy lift. It takes a lot of time. We talked about the municipal code update, update taking the better part of a year. Strategic plan is right along, along that, too. It's, it's about a year to, to get these things done. But the sooner we get going on it, the sooner we go. And with that, I'd be happy to answer any Measure S questions. This is the latest update. We're just under 60% on, on the yes side for Measure S. And so, I look at that as an overwhelming, the, the, the community saying, "We want, we want you guys to keep performing those, or delivering those services." But I also heard, going through the process, not to get lost in that, that they want to, also want us to do a better job of efficiently delivering the services and, and making sure that we're running a tight ship as well, so.
Thank you, sir. Certainly, it ought to be on the minds of everybody here that SEBA, at least, is entering into negotiations early next year with the county for another pay increase. I think they're likely to get it. I know you can't comment on the matter, but I, I mean, if they get a, if they get a 12%, that, that is money that's gonna come right out of our general fund to pay for law enforcement services. And that's not something that anybody here can negotiate. We just need to be ready to receive that bill. And if this Measure S helps us maintain current services, a 12% raise for deputy sheriffs across the board certainly is not, is an addition to our current services. So, that's why I'm, I said what I said, the previous agenda item. We're not out of the woods with this money. I think the costs of our services are gonna continue to rise out, and, and I don't think we have a whole lot of control over that. Not to say I don't think deputy sheriffs, our deputies, and our fire department personnel don't deserve to be compensated appropriately for the, the work they do. In our last meeting, we, we recognized several of them for heroic work that is deserving of compensation. But it is something we need to be mindful of, is these bills continue to come in and we have to pay them. That is just, that is just the nature of the business. We don't get to negotiate on the, on those terms. So, it, it's concerning to me that this Measure S got us to $6 million. And with maybe the BRTAC fees, we were able to get to eight, which covers the deficit barely. Maybe next year, well, again, I'm excited about the goals and objectives for next year because it gives us an opportunity to continue to tighten belts and maybe, maybe perform as if we never got Measure S. Let's pretend it's not there. Because it's not, it's not a, a, you know, a fat check in our account that we can go spend now. We, we need to continue to find ways to generate revenue in our city. We need to continue to find ways to cut spending when able, when we're able to. Because it's, I'm, I'm concerned that next year, even if it's late next year, we get reported back that, hey, you know, costs of services are going up for the county. I don't know if we've realized the cost of body cams yet. I think that was something that the county has, I think, if I remember correctly, the sheriff's report, the county was gonna eat that cost initially until it was rolled out. I'm not sure if we're realizing that cost yet in our contract. I'm not sure if we're realizing that cost yet in our contract, but that is another monumental cost to store that much data. The cost to redact said data, it costs money. Um I'm I'm anticipating probably gonna be another increase on that if we haven't seen it already. So um thank you for for the update. I I'm I'm glad it passed. We don't have to make the difficult decision, rather, carry out the difficult decision we already made earlier in the year to cut services. Um but I I'm, I'm concerned about how this is gonna play out, we're moving forward. And it's, that's if nothing changes in our city. If we increase no services, we're still gonna see an increase in the costs of the services, so.
So are we sure that that's gonna pass, though? I mean, are they gonna round up or how's that gonna work?
Uh well, we we had to hit, hit fifty plus one, so.
Oh, okay.
They'd have to find a lot of ballots on the no side to.
Okay, okay.
Any other questions, staff?
I've got one thing.
Sure.
It's not really a question, maybe more of just a statement. You know, when we were talking about Measure S leading up to the election, we had a lot of numbers, a lot of graphs, charts, all kinds of things. Maybe I missed it in the mo- amongst the plethora of information. Um but even while moving forward with this, as we look down the road, kind of to Justin's point of, you know, costs are gonna go up, could we see a presentation that shows um how things have gone up over the years? Let's say we've had the fire department, we've had the sheriff department, even our uh road guys, uh our maintenance of our vehicles, how from the start of our city, from incorporation to where we are now, every year, how much are we going up? We're spending a percentage of increase in our operating costs of, how much more are we paying gas just for our units to to drive around town and our our work crews? How much did we see an increase in the sheriff's department from year to year? And if we've been using them for the past twenty some odd years, well, from time one to now, how much of an increase have we seen in that timeframe? To show that incrementally it's going up, yes, but we've seen from here to here, it's been thirty percent increase over these past years or whatever the case is, to show people that the, things just keep going up, they're not gonna go down, whether it's the sheriff's department, whether it's the fuel costs, whether it's the fire department, whatever. It doesn't matter what it is. They typically supplies and consumable things that we use don't go down.
And sorry, and 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 carrying on that, when's the last time we saw a major revenue source being brought into the city of Ucaipa minus a tax? Cuz face it, Ucaipa is development evasive. We don't like to see this, the change of our city or the the uh the footprint of our city change. The last time we saw a major development, absent Ucaipa point, because I'm not sure we've entirely realized that's the sales tax of that project just yet. But the last time we saw a major tax generating development was what, McDonald's and Ross? Twenty years ago? So the cost, I would, I would, maybe not from the city's incorporation, but in the last twenty years, how much sales tax have been generated and compare that to how much the cost of services, if just the two things that we have zero control over, have gone up? Because I'd be, I'd be willing to bet it's probably a pretty scary realization that.
It it's a scary realization. I actually have it, not from incorporation, I have it for the last twenty years. Um uh I don't have the the revenue dialed in yet, but I can tell you from a, from a, uh kind of a, I I split them into buckets. So public safety was a um, and I I adjusted for inflation as well. And the number was um a three hundred percent increase over twenty years, uh adjusted for inflation on, for public safety. Um slightly less for development services and community services. But but I believe that all three of them were over two hundred percent increases, adjusted for inflation. And then, and then, um but I don't have the revenue, the revenue has growth. Um but but we're not talking three hundred percent, we're talking ten. And so, and so um the service levels uh from a costing standpoint are exponentially increasing. Um but the revenue to support them was just trickling up. And so um well, uh Measure S is a significant infusion that's never happened at the city that that plugs the gap for now. But if the trend continues like it did the last twenty years, we have the same problem where costs just keep going up and revenue trickles up. And so I do have that information, I'll, I can, I can get um get it more detailed with some of the things that you mentioned and get that over to you. Uh but the other component of that, just so you know, is the fourth category, support services, city hall staff. Um when I did that same um um inflation-adjusted tracking over that twenty-year period, it was a negative twenty-six percent. And so we had three hundred percent increases for all those of our service lines, but support, we actually had twenty-six percent less than than uh than we did twenty years ago.
Is that just running vacancies, doing, doing more with less? Is that the old mantra?
Oh, it's, it's, it's doing more with less and then, um but but every dollar that we spend, it's for, it's for um, it's for good things. It's, hey, we want another deputy, we want, we want to do this for the, we wanna provide this type of service, it's, it's, it's good spending and it's, it's, but the city doesn't have the money, so the city says, all right, just squeeze support so that we can do a little bit more service, a little bit more service. And over the course of time, we tripled the services provided and took a quarter out of the support of those services. So as as we move forward, it's it's a, it's kind of a clunky operation because the services are being undersupervised. Um and and then we have the deferred maintenance issues and all of that that are are starting to rear up. So so we have, we're, we're not, I think your term was riding high on the hog, we're certainly not. We've, we've got an opportunity to fix long-time issues and we do not wanna mess that up. We wanna do this correctly.
If there's no other uh question from staff or for staff, we do have a public comment on the matter.
Is it riding high on the hog or eating high on the hog?
I, I don't know.
I don't know.
I bet Mary Rudner knows the answer to that.
The barnlar, the barnyard uh phrases are eluding me at the moment, I apologize.
So this item and the next item is just a receiving file, there's no vote, right?
The, this one is a uh receiver file.
There, there may be, there may be a vote on the uh, on the last item.
So, uh Dr. Wong, you have a submitted public speaker slip on item number thirteen, the Measure S update, sir.
Well, um in a way, I'm glad it's looking like it's passing. It would have passed probably with a greater amount of votes if people trust the city to manage its fiscal uh deficits. And there is not that trust. So I thought, and I could be wrong, in assuming that, I was told that Measure S had a stipulation for a community oversight. I didn't hear anything about that tonight, am I wrong about that? If there is a community oversight, I think we should be talking about that and how that should be processed and exactly what the oversight is. I presume the oversight is on every dollar that is created by Measure S and nothing else. But again, uh we're not talking about it. I'm also concerned that since the revenue is not coming in until the fiscal year twenty-six, we're just saying, oh, we're gonna go ahead and make sure the operation stays the same. Why are we not looking at areas that we can improve? Because again, even if we get it in twenty-six, whether the first responders' rates go up or some other rates go up and the cost of living goes up, construction, whatever, we have to look at trying to fix some of our problems now. One of the things that I feel the city has not looked at is balance growth. You yourself mentioned that the last time we had revenue growth was for McDonald's twenty years ago. Why aren't we looking at balance growth with commercial and not just focus on residents? We're not doing that. And the longer we don't do that, the more first responder needs we're gonna have. And as the cost goes up, we're gonna see ourselves in a hole. The, the citizens of this community, their pocketbook says, okay, we had to pay twice, whether you call it a tax or not. The money from BRTech went to the city, the money from the tax will go to the city. They don't wanna see this again. So why aren't we starting now rather than the uh the fiscal year twenty-six and trying to see what areas do we need to cut? What areas can we improve on? What areas can we make more revenue, which is what we need to do? And and so I think there's a lot of things to consider. I would like to hear some comments about the Oversight Committee. And one last thing, I have sent a message out to Musk and Ramaswamy to come and help us fix the problem, but they won't reply to me.
Yeah, Department of Government Efficiency. City, uh citizen oversight, can we, can we comment on the matter?
Yes, that that was included in the measure, that is required, so that is something that will um be enacted. Also, um Dr. Wong's comment about, you know, perhaps it would have gotten more votes. Uh in any election, I've seen a, a twenty-point margin of victories considered landslide. That's a, that, it's not just, uh you know, a a little success, that that is a, that's a huge victory.
So, but, but can you, can you delve in a little bit deeper into this uh citizen oversight? What does that look like as far, what is, what was required by statute for that?
Yeah, Mayor, I can, I can answer this. Um looking back to Resolution number twenty-two-four dash forty-one, it states, prior to consideration of the city's annual budget, the city manager shall submit to the Citizens Oversight Committee, established by the Ucaipa Public Safety and Essential Services Protection Measure, an expenditure plan showing the proposed expenditure of proceeds from the general transactions and use tax. The committee shall report on the proposed expenditure plan to the city council prior to adoption of the city's annual budget. That's essentially the details that we have on the committee right now as far as um number of members of the committee. Um we haven't fully um figured that part out yet, um but we will be looking into that very soon. We're looking to bring appointments to our committees and committee assignments at the January city council meeting. Um so potentially that that appointment could be made there, um but we're still looking into that.
Any further questions, staff? Mr. White, thank you so much for your uh item. Item fourteen, by our city clerk, November fifth, twenty-four, general municipal election wrap-up.
Thank you, Mayor, good evening. Item fourteen tonight is an update regarding the general municipal election that was held in the city of Ucaipa on Tuesday, November fifth, twenty-twenty-four. We're just over a week post-election. The San Bernardino County Registrar of Voters continues to process ballots and provide daily updates. After the thirty-day canvas period in which all balance ballots are counted, the county will provide to me the official results. Those results will then be presented to the city council for adoption at the December ninth regular city council meeting. While these updates are unofficial, we have a pretty clear picture of the races here in Ucaipa. For purposes of tonight's update, I'd like to focus on the recall in District One, as it appears that it will be successful. In that likely event, a vacancy will exist on the council. It's important for the city council and the public to understand the options available per the California Government Code. Section three-six-five-one-two-B of the Government Code states that if a vacancy occurs in an elective office, the city council shall, within sixty days from the commencement of the vacancy, either fill the vacancy by appointment or call a special election to fill the vacancy. So let's talk about your options. If the council is interested in a special election, it would be held at the next regularly established election date, not less than a hundred and fourteen days from the call of the special election. For this option, we're looking at an election to be held on Tuesday, November fourth, twenty-twenty-five. The cost of the special election is unknown at this time as we have not received an official estimate from the Registrar of Voters. It is estimated to be in excess of a hundred thousand dollars. If the council is interested in filling the vacancy by appointment, the person appointed to fill the vacancy would hold office for the unexpired balance of the term of office. Newly adopted section two-point-zero-four-point-zero-four-zero of the Ucaipa Municipal Code outlines the procedures for filling a vacancy. That procedure consists of posting a notice of vacancy and inviting applications from residents in District One. Interviews of the candidates would then be conducted by the city council at a public meeting. While this process is outlined in the newly adopted municipal code, I'd like to note that none of the previously mentioned shall be construed to limit the ability or interfere with the right of the city council to make a direct appointment without considering applications. Staff is recommending that the city council discuss their options and provide any direction to staff as necessary. That concludes my presentation, I'm happy to answer any questions for you.
We do have four public speaker slips on the matter. Um if, unless there's questions, uh I think we should hear from the speakers first. No objections. Dr. Wong, you're the first speaker, followed by Mrs. Colleen Wong, Mrs. Holly Warner, and Mrs. Kathy Sellers.
So the results of the election, even though it's not finalized, um it looks pretty much finalized. So I wanna congratulate um the people that uh got what they wanted uh and condolences to those who didn't. I I just wanna make a comment on the new city council that I hope that they um consider the needs of each other to the extent that they will allow time for them to review um important um projects and cases because it's not an easy uh job that you have. You have family, jobs and and so on. And then you add getting the knowledge of what to do for certain things that will help the city out. So a- again, be kind to your fellow council members. So anyway, that's all, thank you.
Thank you, Doctor. Mrs. Colleen Wong.
I'm actually reading for someone else. This is for Edward Timmons, District Three. Good evening. Today, we stand at a moment of reflection and optimism for our community. The preliminary election results indicate a successful recall of Matt Garner, a pivotal step towards ensuring that the voices of our residents are heard and represented effectively. This recall is not about failure, but about the necessity of a city council member to actively engage with their constituents and represent their needs. Matt Garner was recalled because over time he failed to meet with and represent the people of District One. As we all know, representation is the cornerstone of effective governance. A council member's duty is to listen, engage, and work with the betterment of the district they serve. When that responsibility is not met, the very foundation of our town's democracy is challenged. We also recognize that campaign statements are powerful and they matter. They set the expectations of what a candidate will do once in office. In a small town, there is no room for cronyism or doublespeak. Saying one thing to get elected and doing another after, another after the fact, our community deserves better. We deserve transparency, integrity, and a commitment to keeping the promises made to us. It's important to note that public services responsibility and those who fail to equally represent their constituents will always face the potential for tough elections. This is not just a reminder for those in office now, but a message for those future leaders. Represent your people with honor or you risk being held accountable. Looking ahead, we're hopeful that a new candidate selected with impartiality and integrity will be appointed to fill the vacancy. We need someone who will act without bias, who will prioritize with interests of District One and who will work with honor and integrity for the betterment of our community. We are confident that with the right leadership, we will continue to move forward together, united in our goal to serve every resident with the respect and dedication. Thank you, Edward Timmons.
Thank you, ma'am. Mrs. Holly Warner, followed by Mrs. Kathy Sellers.
Good evening, Holly Warner. Um thanks for taking this on tonight. Uh I know you've got a difficult decision to make. I just wanted you to consider that um leaving the seat open for basically a year, I think that leaves a district underrepresented here. Um and while I think maybe some people would rather have, you know, an election called right now, that's not a possibility. So I just wanted to propose maybe something slightly different. Um if it would be, be possible to have, um form a small committee, maybe chosen by lottery spots, like five or seven people from District One to review applicants for the seat, conduct interviews, and then make recommendations. That way, District One might have some of their voice heard and ultimately what will be your decision. You know, maybe they can give you their top three names or something like that or make specific recommendations to see you're getting some represented voices um in the selection process so that it feels more fair. Cuz I think that there's a little bit of trust that needs to be rebuilt and I think. So that it feels more fair because I think that there's a little bit of trust that needs to be rebuilt. And I think that that might maybe help ease the process. Thank you.
Thank you, ma'am. Mrs. Kathy Sellers.
Kathy Sellers, District One. We're here to my, tonight to make it clear. Before the new council is seated, we want to establish that the people of Ucaipa expect and deserve the right to vote on a replacement for Matt Garner. With an overwhelming majority of voters supporting the recall, our community's voice must continue to be heard by allowing us to choose a representative who truly reflects our values and priorities. Here are our reasons. One, historical precedent. Since nineteen ten, California voters have consistently held the right to choose a replacement when an official is recalled. The twenty twenty-three legislative change disregards over a century of democratic precedent by removing this choice from the people. Two, overwhelming mandate. The recall of Matt Garner, supported by two thirds of voters, sends a clear message of the public's dissatisfaction. Such a decisive rejection signals that voters expect to exercise their right to fill the position with a representative of their choosing. Three, rejection of special interest influence. Despite extensive special interest spending on misleading campaigns, voters saw through the lies and took a strong stand for accountability. They deserve the chance to select someone they trust rather than allowing backdoor appointments or state intervention. Four, preserving democracy. The right to vote for one's representatives is foundational to democracy. The recent legislative change undermines this principle by stripping residents of their voice and filling a crucial local government role. We can thank Senator Josh Newman for that. Five, trust in local government. Allowing voters to replace the recalled official can help restore trust in Ucaipa's leadership. Denying this right fuels resident frustration, increases mistrust, and deepens the divide between the community and elective officials. Six, council's role in supporting voter choice. The Ucaipa City Council should advocate on behalf of its residents' rights, pushing to restore their say in selecting a replacement. This is an opportunity for council members to show they respect the will of the people and support a transparent democratic process. Seven, setting a positive example. As a council, allowing residents to choose a new representative sets a positive example of accountability and respect for the democratic process, reinforcing that Ucaipa's leadership prioritizes the community's voice over political agendas. The election code sets forth a provision to set a special election to fill a vacancy that can occur well before November twenty-fifth. California Election Code Section fifteen hundred establishes a mail ballot election can be set on May sixth. The cost, cost for setting that special election in one district should not be a hundred thousand dollars. However, if this council saw fit to approve a hundred thousand dollars spent on suing its own citizens in a manner that a judge and grand jury deemed unwise and a violation of our rights, it can surely restore those rights by setting an election. Thank you.
Thank you.
Mr. Mayor, I'd like to say something.
Sir.
First, I'd like to, um, first, I'd like to express my gratitude to the residents of Ucaipa for giving me the opportunity to serve. Um, it's, it has been an honor to sit up in this seat for the past two years. While the results of the election have not yet been certified, it's pretty clear which, which way the recall is going to go. And, uh, uh, while I'm disappointed with the results, I respect the will of the, of the voters. As we prepare for approaching, uh, a transition, uh, I want to make sure that my constituents in the first district are not left without representation for any period of time. Therefore, I'd like to ask the council to direct staff to move forward with the process of soliciting applications for the appointment to fill the upcoming vacancy in District One. And to bring applicants forward for interviews and a vote at the December ninth city council meeting. I'd like to make a motion on that.
Questions of staff before we consider the motion? Comments? There's a motion on the table to direct staff to solicit applications for a representative of District One to return with the applications for a public interview and scrutiny on December ninth, twenty twenty-four. Is there a second?
I'll second.
Uh, second, um, seconded by Councilman Duncan. Any further discussion? All those in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? Motion carries five to, five to zero. Moving on to council member business report. Remember the council's business report?
So are we going to have a twenty-fifth meeting? Is that, has that, has been established yet or?
Well, when it got to my, my time to speak, then I was going to ask if there are any objections from the council to canceling the second meeting in November, since it does fall on the week of Thanksgiving. Uh, there is, uh, nothing on the operational side that can't wait. So we'd like, unless, if, if there are no objections, we'll go ahead and cancel that, that meeting.
Any objections? Hearing none. That, 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 uh, meeting will be vacated.
Thank you.
Any other business report?
Turkey trout here pretty soon. Yeah. So anybody that wants to run a five K, Mr. Wong?
Are you going to be running the five K with us, Dr. Wong? We just had a conversation last night about the importance of maintaining these runs for the healthy Ucaipa.
I think that.
I refuse to believe you couldn't go believe that one on, sir, but I, I respect it.
I believe it starts at what, seven o'clock in the morning? Seven o'clock in the morning. And, uh, do we have a tough course like we did last time? No? Okay.
You can create room for the pumpkin pie and all the deliciousness.
Right.
The day, it's Thanksgiving, right?
It's Thanksgiving Day. Yeah. So run.
Early.
Run and then eat your hearts out.
Yeah.
And then we have, uh, Winter Fest right after that, right? On Friday? So Saturday.
We're going to see a net proceeds on that as well? Yes.
Absolutely.
Yes, there's the spirit.
Yeah. Come out to the youth advisory. I think we have a youth advisory, um, tent. Yep, we're going to be auctioning off stuff. Come bring your money for.
Yeah.
Help us out.
Sir?
One thing. I've known Councilman Duncan for quite a while now. I'm not trying to embarrass him, but, uh, I want to thank you for your twelve years of service to the city.
Thank you. I want to, the week of, the week of November eleventh is obviously an important one for our country. Um, we weren't, we didn't convene on, on Monday for this very reason. We wouldn't be able to exercise these democratic processes that we take, um, and hold in here to our hearts if not but for the men and women who have decided to, um, don the uniform, take up arms and fight for our freedoms. And so I wanted to say, um, Happy Veterans Day to every member of our city staff and every member of our community who have, uh, served in the armed forces. He doesn't know I'm going to do this and I'm sure he's not going to like it, but my brother-in-law is here, a twenty-year army veteran retired out of Fort Bragg. He flew up from North Carolina this week to be with us and if we could, just a random applause for his twenty years of service to the United States Army. He'll probably cause me some kind of physical harm later for doing that. Yeah. Thank you, Chad. Um, Mr. City Manager, do you have anything else that you'd like to announce?
Other than Happy Thanksgiving, I do not.
Indeed. Thank you so much. The next regular city council meeting for the city of Ucaipa will be Monday, December ninth, twenty twenty-four. Everybody enjoy their Thanksgiving. Thank you.